...and go into further discussion. I ask that testimony shared tonight on the record remain as focused as possible on the rules and regulations before us today. We received very productive feedback during our first meeting in Dedido. I want to thank all those who came out to share their concerns. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the mayor and vice mayor of Dedido, Mayor Savaros and Vice Mayor Beneventi, and also the municipal planning council members who took the time to come out for that public hearing. It has been a long time coming, but I'm certain the members of the team from my office to the team at the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I want to also say that the legal minds of the Attorney General's office wanted to make sure that we build this program right from the beginning. And we have been committed to making the medicinal marijuana program safe, accessible, and affordable. Ladies and gentlemen, this hasn't been an easy process, but we are definitely making headway. Communities throughout the nation have been experiencing many of the same hiccups we are now. They have built programs that suit their populations, and with your help, I know we can create a program that fits the needs of our island community. The rules and regulations before us today have been drafted by the team at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. They have been reviewed and approved by the Office of the Attorney General. Tonight's discussions represent the open door of collaboration. And I know we are, and I know we have many kinks, kinks to iron out moving forward, but this is the next step in the process prescribed by the government. And I'm extremely grateful for your patience, your concern, and your participation in this effort to serve our people and improve the way we care for the sick and those who need us the most. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I welcome all of you tonight. I must take the time to thank our mayor of Sinahania, Mayor Robert Hoffman, and the Vice Mayor, Mayor Rudy Iriarte, and all the management and staff who helped us bring this public hearing to you today. It is being recorded, and it will be re-presented during the feeding of the Legislative Channel as a rebroadcast, so we are being recorded, but it is not live. So I want to say on the floor, una cituas masi. And in addition, there will be two more opportunities to speak out of this matter. Next Tuesday, which is May 31st, at 6:00 p.m. in the evening, again, we will take our public hearing roundtable to down south in the village of Santa Rita. It will be at the Santa Rita mayor's office. And then on Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m., we will have another public hearing at the Guam Legislature. Everyone's input is important. I want everyone, every voice to be heard on this matter, so please invite your family, your friends, your neighbors, or your coworkers to review the current rules and regulations and attend the next meetings. If you or your family can't make it on the above date, our committee will continue, our subcommittee will continue to accept written testimonies, and they may be submitted too. The Office of Senator Tina Munyabarnes, 155 Hesper Place, Gonya, Guam, 96910, and that suite 101, or via the old-fashioned way, via facsimile at 472-3400, or you can email our office at senator@tina munyabarnes.com. And if anyone else should have any further questions or inquiries, they can call our office manager, Janine Cordero, or Chief of Staff, Millie Foggie. We do have our policy writers here, Alan Sepeda and Natalie Canata, from our office, and our numbers are 472-3455 or 56. So before we open the floor tonight, I'd like to ask once again that we focus on the rules and regulations only. I also ask that we give all of those sharing their testimonies this evening the utmost respect. Differing opinions may arise this evening, but everyone will be heard. We will first yield to those who haven't spoken yet at the hearings. There continues to be sign-up sheets that are located right here where Mr. Sepeda is at, to my left, to your right. And if you're reading your testimony this evening, please assist the committee in the transcription process by providing your written copy with one of our staff members. If you have a written copy, please share it with our committee. It makes it easier for us to transcribe because we are on a deadline by the Oversight Chair, and that deadline is June 12th for us to submit to the Oversight on Health. We'd like to report these hearings out as quickly as possible, so again, on the floor, una cituas masi. Vice Speaker, do you have any opening statements? He does not. So with that being said, I have a Larry Sabat. Would you like to say something, or just to listen?
Now, I'm serving for him. Did you hear that right?
Yes, you can. I will give you that opportunity, sir. Also, I have August Fest in German, Nurestrow. Am I saying that right? You're more than welcome to join us.
I'm going to probably testify on other dates.
On other dates. So what about August? That's you, right? Would you like to present oral testimony?
At the last year's...
No, no, no. This is the roundtable discussions with the rules and regs that were submitted by Public Health to us.
All right.
Okay, so you got the new draft.
Yeah, I read it, but I don't, I'm not Canada as much.
German, German. And you're going to present written testimony on other days. And if anybody else would like to hear, I did see Women Grow Guam here. You're more than welcome to sign up and come up to the, if nobody else is here to testify. I do have Luella Suena, but are you here as a Guam post or are you here as Guam post? You're just here to take testimony. Yes. Thank you for signing up. Appreciate it. I would like for you to state your name for the record, and then you can proceed.
Is this...
Turn around. Okay, on the top, Mr. Fest.
Oh, there you go. Artis Fest is my name. I am not as prepared as I would like to be. I will submit in writing at the Legislature meeting. Since you're kind of tied by hands a little bit by only focusing on what's in here, but I do have a little bit of a history lesson that we need to review because it's pertinent to intermain to what is in here. Is that allowable?
Mr. Fest, I will go ahead and hear what you have to say, and it just...
I'm trying to keep it as brief as possible.
If it goes out of bounds, I will go ahead and...
You'll call foul.
Please proceed.
All right. First off, I am very disappointed that I don't see more representatives of who came up with this, especially from the Health Department or any doctors committees, because that's very important to...
Mr. Fest, you need to know for the record that the stakeholders within the government of Guam were all invited. We also had the opportunity to invite the doctors and send it out, send the notices out to GMA, GMS through the public hearing notice. So there was that presentation sent out. The government did state to me orally that they would not be at the community hearings, but they would be at the last public hearing because that's where they feel is most important to them.
So Mr. Gillen will be there?
I am not sure, but the Department of Public Health Division, Mr. Tom Medus group, who oversaw this process, will be there.
All right. Speaking of Mr. Gillen, do you, as a senator, do you mandate anything that they do at that department?
Mr. Fest, what happens is when the law was written, the Department of Public Health and Social Services was the agency that was directed to facilitate the rules and regs moving forward.
Right.
So that's the direction that's been given.
Yeah. First question I would like to ask him, how to devote on the law itself. But more importantly, about him personally and what it has to do with this, let me finish. He has been noted in the media, newspapers, and on camera at the University of Guam, saying that you guys had over the whole nine yards.
Right.
Well, it was before the rules and regs were even, that was. But he has been reported as saying, I don't want to, I'm going to paraphrase and not quote, and he's not quoting it as something he's saying he's posing it or guising it as, well, many doctors are very concerned that they're going to lose their license if they provide a statement to a patient. Now, I don't know if anybody else knows, but that's not possible. When California had their, started theirs within the first year or so, there was a big hubbub about it, and somebody tried to disqualify a doctor, tried to take his license away. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, and it was knocked down and said, no, you cannot take a doctor's license away for merely suggesting on paper that a patient may benefit from cannabis. I would like you, as a senator, since you're in charge of their department, for him to quit fear-mongering the doctors, all right, and to put out a public statement saying that no doctor will lose their license because they qualify a patient, give a statement to a patient, all right? That's, you know, if he's in charge of this, he should know better. He should not be fear-mongering the doctors. If there is a doctor that does have a concern, he should be stating in the public, well, that's just not true, and state that no doctor can or will lose their license. But I'm getting off track here. I'm starting in the middle versus the beginning. The beginning is 1937. That is when the fraud was perpetrated on the American people, all right? There's many stories about why, how, and who, but as Mayor LaGuardia in New York proved within two years of the 1937 Tax Act on Marijuana, that all the concerns that were being touted before Congress and have ramroded through were unfounded, 100% unfounded, all right? And in 1977, it went all the way up to the Supreme Court, got knocked down. Cannabis was legal once again until Tricky Dick got into office and gave us the Control of Substances Act, where the plant once again, and the American people were, fraud was perpetrated upon them, where you have it classified as no medicinal benefit. Recently is, I'm not sure what year, but anybody can look it up, the United States government has a patent on THC and CBD. So for it to be classified as no medical use and have a patent on it for the express purposes of treating Alzheimer's and Parkinson's, there we are again, fraud, all right? So that's where I like to start, and that's the end of the history lesson for right now. Now, my sticky points are very, very short, but I did get one out already that, you know, like I said. All right. I just wanted your attention before I continue. All right. Fair and affordable fees. Okay. I think I've sent you messages to this effect before, but a regular pharmacy, their fees to operate is only $150 to $200 per year, all right? If we're going to have $30,000 a year put upon us, I would suggest it be fair that all other dispensaries of any kind of medicine have a $30,000 fee. It seems to have been working just fine at $150 for how many years? Now, we're talking about one medicine that's grown naturally, that doesn't harm anybody, that here's a chance for us to make money, $30,000, or we got to reinvent the wheel? No, I don't think so. All right? If you want to charge us $30,000 to start a business, then every other dispensary of medicine should have to pay the same fees. If you want to dispense alcohol, you should have to pay $30,000. If you want to dispense cigarettes, you should have to pay $30,000. Or as Mr. Larcicio wants, $5 million for each and every business. So let's be fair, everybody should have to pay $5 million, or $30,000, whichever the case they be. It's a lot easier to keep track of a plant and what it produces than hundreds and hundreds of medications and all their side effects and all their toxic effects and their addictive properties. Speaking of addictive properties, the Health Department wants to put on a label of each package that it is addictive. Again, false statements. Cannabis is not addictive, period. So next up, and okay, we got Mr. Gillen out there fear-mongering the doctors. In the economic impact statement, it says targeted population of 5,002 persons, but there's only 3,300 eligible patients. So the estimated target population is actually only 3,300 eligible patients because the 1,650 eligible caregivers are not consumers. They're only allowed to either grow, which is another point we got to talk about, or acquire for the 3,300 eligible patients. So we still only have 3,300 eligible patients, no matter how many caregivers we have. So $30,000 for a business to provide for those people when we got a health director fear-mongering the doctors, trying to, you know, scare them in not providing a physician's statement. I suggested last year that we should start with the registration, which I disagree with also, but at least let's get the statements out there from the doctors and take some kind of survey to see what the customer base actually is. But if you've got the Health Department director fear-mongering the doctors, who's going to provide a statement? You're not going to have any customers because nobody's going to have a statement to provide to any operating dispensary. I mean, you can't put the cart before the horse. The horse is the patients, and the patient's got to go through the doctors if you're fear-mongering the doctors. I did get a list from the Department of Health of all the doctors, but there was no contact information. I suggested to them, and I would like you to follow up on it, I would like you to follow up on it, a survey from the board of the physicians from the Health Department, a survey to all doctors to see, you know, whether they reject the survey or participate in the survey with their identities disclosed, or whether they're highly opposed, generally opposed, neutral, generally supportive, or highly supportive of a patient to receive a physician's statement stating that cannabis would be beneficial or may have been beneficial for them. So that comes back to, okay, you know, so that way a patient can look at this list and not have to go from doctor to doctor to doctor to doctor to see who's going to be sympathetic with them and give them a statement, then he can go get his medicine. All right? It's going to create, you know, it's going to just get away a lot of the confusion, you know, what camp you're in, am I going to go try to see you and try to get a statement or not, you know? Why waste my time and their time? You know what I mean? So they don't have to participate, but their name goes down that they rejected the survey. And then if they go through the survey, yes, their name is going to be published, and we know what camp they're in. That way, we know, the patients know who to go to. You know, we can't have this one doctor or two doctors providing all the statements on the island. You know, that's just not going to work, because that's going to look kind of funny too. I already have my statement. I've had a statement since 2005, but now my doctor's death, she shouldn't take my advice for medical use. There it is, colon cancer. You know, there you go, suppository, happened to him a day, twice a day, boom, goes away. Anyhow, we need to, like California, California, when the doctor issues a statement, it doesn't say for what condition, it just blatantly says the patient may benefit. If you want to get your $30,000 or $3 million, the more statements that you provide, the more likely you are to sustain a business. But I think the fees should be more in line with what a regular pharmacy is at $150. We don't need, I'm sure the government, as somebody has alluded to me, has programmers. We only need three apps, one for the dispensaries, one for the cultivation site, and one for the patients. Three apps, three simple little programs that any third-year college student can write. So that'll cut down the cost right there. But back to, yeah, let's eliminate the narrow, very narrow list of conditions. Like I said, California, you may benefit, God bless you, be careful. You know, making it way harder for everybody. And that's another thing, it's kind of vague in here whether you have to drag your medical records to the Health Department first, you got to take them to the doctor. And it doesn't say, it says if needed or if applicable, you know, it's a real gray area. You go with your, and who's providing the statement? Does this patient pick it up at the Health Department? Does the doctor have one on hand? Are you going to trust the patient to take it to the doctor because he's going to have to hand carry it from the doctor's office back to the Health Department anyhow? And then when you get there, you're going to, oh, well, you don't have this record, you don't have all your medical records. Do I have to come in with a hand truck and a filing cabinet for the Health Department? All right, so that's what I'm saying. Just do away with all that, follow California, a patient may benefit. All right. Now, back to the sticky point of last year, which caused a hubbub, and the persons from the Health Department implied that a patient to grow for themselves was going to cost him $35,000. Where are we at on that?
Mr. Fest, I'm going to go ahead and ask you just to go ahead and share your statements.
That was a question.
I'm not asking, I'm not answering any questions.
No.
I'm not answering any questions.
I'm not answering any questions. Okay, well, let me state for the record and for everybody to know that under the definitions, ripple use includes cultivation. And also, under for dispensaries and cultivation sites, it also says that they can purchase or acquire from the patients or caregivers. So my last sticky point would be patient registration. As in California, it's voluntary. All you need to take to a dispensary is your physician's statement. The dispensary then verifies with the doctor that this patient does have a statement from you, and it's good. They make a copy of it, they take a copy of your driver's license, and then that's it. If there's any problem with the police, same thing, you hand them your statement, and that's it. All right, like I said, I'll be attending at the Legislature. I'll probably have a, hopefully I'll have a written statement to submit, but for now, these are the biggest sticky points.
Thank you, Mr. Fest. Ladies and gentlemen, I also have here to provide oral testimony, I have Joe Black Jr. and Andrea Pellicani. If there anyone else wishes to present oral testimony tonight, please do not hesitate to sign up here at the sign-in table where Mr. Sepeda is at. Alan Sepeda? Thank you again for the record. Go ahead and state your name and where you're from.
Sorry, Senator, I cannot state my name tonight because of losing my benefits or anything else, but reading through the Cannabis Act, as he said earlier, about the small list of medical illness, what we didn't see on there is migraines or depression or anything like that. Personally, right now, I suffer from PTSD, that's why I couldn't come to the first meeting, and I'm on this medication called Remeron. Now, for a lot of people that doesn't know what Remeron is, it is, it's an antidepressant medication used to treat a variety of conditions, including depression, mental mood disorders, and PTSD. Now, Remeron might sound, you know, great, right? But until you get to the side effects, dizziness, drowsiness, dry mouth, which I could deal with with marijuana, what is the thing that really gets me is lack of movement. Right now, I'm in college, getting two degrees, and lack of movement could be kind of iffy for me, you know what I mean? So there's a lot that needs to be added in here as far as medical conditions. Migraines, of course, why not? All this doing is, you know, making the spectrum of medical conditions wider so Guam can get more money back because if you tax in 3 million, 4 million, then the dispensaries have to charge about $250 a gram, which, I'm sorry, $250 a gram, I'm not going to a dispensary, I'll go to Joe Blow down the street and get it for $50 a gram. Therefore, it's taking money from the government of Guam. So how can we fight the war on the black market, medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, when the government of Guam wants to tax it to where the patients can't afford it? So as far as the 5,000, from the first, with the first draft, it was 30,000, and the new draft is 5,000, 5,000, 15,000, and Andrew, what did you come in at?
The first one is 35,000.
35,000?
Now it's 30,000.
Now it's 30,000, so just a 5,000 difference, and just the other day it went up to 3 million?
No.
Oh, he suggested 3 million? 3 million?
5 million.
5 million to start the business?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I don't like to say that I'm a wealthy person, but I don't just have $5 million laying around to give back, and I know 5 million is not going to come back until the year. Like, as far as the, what is this, I'm sorry, I was, was I reading this wrong? What is it, the renewing? I know no questions, but is it yearly or...
Yes, annually.
Oh, annually, so annually about...
$5 million, what do you think?
So Guam is supposed to get 5 million plus $5 million with seven medical conditions and about not even 1,000 people? So how much are we, I'm sorry, but I can't support, I really do want to support this program for my veterans as well... for my veterans as well as the people of Guam, but I cannot support a program if I'm looking to take more from the people than I am giving back. So, I mean, you just.
Okay, thank you. Please, nothing. Andrea?
Good evening, Senator and Vice Speaker. Thank you again for having us today. Um, I just wanted to recap, we, we have this economic snapshot that we passed last time, so if anybody is here that wasn't here at the first hearing, Janine can, uh, Janine and Lonnie can get you a copy. I don't have this wire today, but the, our four key points. Um, what I do have new for today, um, can I, can I get a, can I get a couple of these for Senator and Vice Speakers? We just put together some numbers with regards to the suggestion to license cannabis businesses $2 million or $5 million. Um, I just wanted to reiterate again, New York with the highest fees at $200,000. Um, that's for the size of market for medical patients in New York. Uh, Guam is nowhere near close to the population, nor do we have the patient market size to , uh, support even a $200,000 licensing fee, uh, not even a $30,000 licensing fee, much less a $5 million licensing fee. And so we put together some information as to why $5 million in licensing is not a good idea. First of all, since last year, we've had many people come in, and the number one issue that we've all had is the, the cost of it, the cost of the program and, and the cost of the fees to participate. Public Health did lower the fees for patients, which is fantastic, down to $15, although we do support completely getting rid of the registry program altogether. Uh, we don't think patients should be registered for any program, especially one that we would require them to give up their Fifth Amendment right to say that they're going to consume something that's federally prohibited. Um, $10 million is, is, if you have one, one dispensary and one cultivator, and this doesn't even account for a manufacturer in between, so if you wanted to make chocolates or whatever, you know, so we'll just call it $10 million. Um, that will get passed to patients on this program, uh, even before cannabis is harvested. No equipment, no hydroponic farm, no steel door, no 750-pound save, uh, no security system, no overhead, nothing, it's already $10 million off the bat. Now we have, uh, and you know what, thank you, Mr. Fest, for pointing out that they, I didn't realize on the economic impact statement that they added the caregivers plus the patients. So this 5,000 that I put here is completely inaccurate, we're back down to 3, 3, 3, 3,000 patients. So if you have three cultivators and three dispensers, uh, dispensaries, which will obviously be foreign investment, or only for the very wealthy locally that could afford $5 million each, that equates to $30 million in licensing fees for government of Guam, um, for them to spend where I guess it would be spent, the legislature would decide where that money would go. If we add 100% participation at 500 patients, which is ridiculous, it's gonna be somewhere probably closer to 25, 30%, let's just call it 5,000 patients, their mouse is $6,000 a patient, and that doesn't even include any medicine. So if you register for this program, you pay your $15 registry fee, uh, you're gonna owe $5,985 into the program before you even buy medicine, uh, to pay for those businesses to be, uh, up and running to provide you medicine, and I, I don't know why this makes sense to anybody, and I don't know why I'm spending this much time arguing it, because it just seems to be, uh, but I guess it needs to be said. Uh, it's prohibitive for look, small local businesses, uh, once again, going back to 75% of, uh, the cannabis industry, uh, employees are, uh, employed by cannabis small businesses. Um, that would leave our local people, uh, back down to minimum wage, which I know you're fighting to, uh, raise the minimum wage, but, uh, minimum wage workers, again, uh, since local families will not be able to open a business, um, I, I don't know how this is good for Guam. Uh, and it adds a tremendous burden to a market that won't survive. It, it, at a $5 million licensing fee, I, I don't even think the program will launch. At 35, at 30,000, we anticipate it may not last a year. Uh, at $5 million, it's not, it's gonna end up in court before it even gets off the ground, causing more delay, and patients won't be able to get their medicines. So we found a study, um, for Colorado and Washington, and, and what happens when you become a little overzealous, uh, and you think that a business is gonna provide millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, and then you overtax it. There's a study here done by the Richmond Journal of Law and Public Interest, and it's, the title is "Colorado, Washington Got Too High: The Argument For Lower Recreational Marijuana Excise Taxes," and I know this is recreational, uh, but the same principles still apply. When the government gets overzealous, uh, and stymies the market, the market should be free, especially if it's a young burgeoning industry. Um, we need to be mindful of that, again, going back to not being able to put the worms back in the can if we launch this program, and we can't get the participation rate that we need to, we need to take those patients off the illicit market and put them into the regulated market. We need to take the cannabis off the street and put them into the dispensaries, and that's the point that we keep trying to make every time we come and speak. Um, and, and it, it's just sad that, you know, we voted for this, 19,000, what was the number, 19,000 plus, uh, people voted for this overwhelmingly, and we still sit here at this table arguing for our right to medical cannabis. Um, so, I'd like to submit this.
Yes, please.
That's all I have for today, Senator.
Thank you very much.
One more thing, Senator, um, one more thing I would like for you guys to look at is the import and export. I mean, I know right now that we're not trying to have any other marijuana from other states, California, Arizona, uh, the only thing that can be grown here is what's ever here, and we're not really sure what's here, we don't know if we have green crack or, let's say, Jackera or anything. All we know is there's Guam weed in Guam. So, how, again, how can we start a medical field with marijuana if we only got three types of marijuana on Guam that we, we aren't allowed, you know, to order seeds from the single seed center or some other place that we can get these medical, you know, strains that we really need? So definitely import and export, that would be a good thing, we can get CBD vapes, and there's, there's so much stuff that we can get in that are bringing more money to Guam, and people that, they don't really, just like CBD, you don't have to have marijuana cards to get a CBD vape, and it's good, or hemp seeds or anything. So, it, again, uh, import, export should be looked at as well, and that, that'll be it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Also here to, if he wants, he signed up, Mr. Franklin, Jay Mano, would you like to say a few words? Are there anyone else wishing to speak? We have a couple more here. I'll give you that opportunity, Mr. Fest, if you write your thoughts down, and I'll go ahead and call you to the table. But as it relates to the rules and rights, nothing, come on up. Mr. Mano?
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Franklin Mano. Thank you, Tanya Muny Barnes and DJ Cruz for the opportunity. Everybody's talking about money, but no mention about the nature of the bill, compassionate one. Will insurance companies pay for this treatment? Recreational use is marketable entity, tourists will come. We're not talking about recreational, we're talking about medicinal. The medical patients most likely, uh, especially the ones who have stage IV, been going through chemo, off-island treatment, either mortgaged their homes once or twice, possibly sold, paid for the bill, passed away, things of that nature. Everybody's talking about making millions of dollars. If it's recreational, way on cue with that, the three people there were talking, but we're talking about the patients, the people who will need medical marijuana or will choose, I'm sure you're all aware of this already, prescription drugs are more dangerous to their children than marijuana will ever be. As to the other night, well pesticides, herbicides, that can only be found in the marijuana if the person who's growing it puts it in there. It doesn't produce it on its own. When a patient's in pain, he would need, the marijuana will give him pain relief, the CBDs will do what it can for healing. So, I'm all for allowing the patients to qualify, to grow their own. You only need soil, a seed, water, and care. You don't need a scientist or a doctor to grow marijuana. You just need the law not to punish you for treating yourself with your sickness. The real question is, when you do pass this bill, and it goes down opposite of what we're hoping for all the sick people, um, how are the sick people gonna pay if they're too sick to hold a job and don't have any money? Who's gonna pay for that? Will the insurance company cover it? That's, all these questions are more important than worrying about $2 million or the projected whatever from New York. We, we don't have millions of people here. Yes, the patient number is down, lower, but if you allow them to grow their own, and then you guys work on a recreational use bill and pass it, then you make the millions, okay? Coming here to argue about millions of dollars or, or regulatory or dispensaries, it's kinda moot, because this is about the sick people, not about somebody's deep pockets or shallow pockets, it's about sickness. If I had cancer, I would wanna grow my own. So, if there's anything, uh, if I missed anything, I'm not sure, but I'm just here to fight on behalf of, I can't use marijuana because of my job, that's the, the only thing, but I'm here to take full risk. If, if I get in trouble for it, then I'll deal with that.
Sejoz Masiya, Mr. Mano, for coming out again and sharing some new thoughts, uh, on the rules and regs. Mr. Fest, I will allow you?
Yes, three short, uh, points. Let's wanna reiterate or introduce that this is a medicine, and whether we buy it at a dispensary or whatever, that there would be no tax on it, because it is a medicine, and you cannot tax medicine, food, shelter, or clothing. I'd like to get something in there to regulate the dispensaries, that they can't charge a membership fee, because that's just gonna add to it. And first and last and final sticky point, we just spent $7 million on FestPAC, a party. Why do we need these state fees? Or why can't the government, you know, if we can come up with $7 million for a party, we should be able to come up with $300,000 to $500,000 a year?
Mr. Fest, I'd ask that you go ahead and keep your statements just to the medical rules and regulations, and, uh, please.
It has, it's germane to funding.
It's not germane to funding. The, the Festival of the Pacific Arts was asked about, was asked from the government of Guam about eight years ago, so please just, can we just separate the two?
Well, the point is, and I'm sure you understand, if we can find $7 million for a party, we can buy $500,000 for a medical program. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Fest. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Vice Speaker, any closing? Um, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank all of you guys for coming out here this evening and sharing your thoughts and recommendations, uh, for the rules and regulations, and seeing how it should be facilitated forward. Again, we will have two more meetings. Our third meeting will be on May 31st, Tuesday, at the Santa Rita Mayor's Office. Uh, it will be at 6:00 PM in the evening. I'd like to thank Mayor Hoffman, uh, for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight, Mayor Dale Alvarez, uh, for giving us the opportunity to have the hearing at Santa, on May 31st at Santa Rita, so if I'm not mistaken, that's next week, Tuesday. And then on the final public hearing, roundtable, we will have it on June 7th, 6:00 PM at the Guam Legislature. Again, I'd ask all of you here tonight to continue to invite your friends, your coworkers, your family members, anyone who, who wants to share their thoughts on the medical rules and regulations moving forward, and how we can implement this program to better access medicinal cannabis to those who really need it, our patients. So with that being said, I will call this, uh, hearing, this roundtable discussion on medicinal, uh, rules and regulations on cannabis to a recess till May 31st, Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Sinamasi. Thank you all for coming again. We do have some water, tea, and snacks, please join us. We, we've made a lot of sandwiches for you to, to eat, please, so please join us. Sinamasi.